Go ahead and we'll get going if Ted is able to join us, that'd be great. But I have well, we do have a quorum present. So we will get us a start on this meeting. I will call this meeting to order at 6:35. And Mary Ann, since you were on my screen as the first trustee to see on my screen, I will ask you to serve as our interim secretary to take the role, if you please.
I'm happy to do so. I may not do it as formally as I'm supposed to. So, so first of just the role of which trustees are present, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Matt Frith?
Here.
Colleen Burns?
Present.
Thank you. Virginia Bloom?
Present.
And Mary Ann Moenraich, present. And I believe that is, and that is the full.
Yeah, Ted Foss, Sarah Glavine, and Christian Harris are absent. Thank you, Mary Ann. Moving on to approval of our minutes of our October 27th meeting. Is there any discussion or corrections that anyone wants to make to those minutes as they are in our, in our packet? Hearing no comments or edits needed, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mary Ann, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Matt Frith?
Yes.
Colleen Burns?
Yeah.
Virginia Bloom? I'm sorry, Virginia, I think I missed you, but yes.
Yeah.
Notting I. And Mary Ann Moenraich, I.
Okay. Oh, the minutes are approved. We'll move on to community member visitor comments. We have no guests who have attended, who have logged in to present. I forwarded everyone the minute, the email that I received and that will be a paraphrase of that will be included in the minutes. We have any, and that will do that. Trustee comments and board calendar.
I'll, I'll just note as a trustee comment that I'm, I am not going to be running again for library board in the next election cycle. This will be the end of my service here and I am pretty sure I am going to be running for school board. So have mercy on me going forward. Yeah.
So bless you, Mary Ann. We, you know, we have a few more meetings with you here, so.
Yes, I'll be through April or thereabouts, March, April, whenever that.
Yeah. So we're not, you're not done with this yet, but thank you for, thank, you know, thank you for all of your, your work on the board. I am running for reelection.
As is Sarah.
As is Sarah.
Correct. And it, and we have at least two or three more candidates, so we should, we should have sufficient candidates for the open seats, which is good.
Yes. So, okay. Any other, Virginia or Colleen, do you have anything to add at this juncture? Okay. I'm seeing head shake. No. David, anything of significance for the, like, the board calendar?
Um, no, nothing. You know, everything is as usual. I did add the dates for the Harwood Lab that are coming up, that again, a number of you are participating in, and thank you very much for that.
Okay. Sounds good. Then that's concluded. We'll move on to staff reports. David's executive director report.
Great. So we've got, yes, we have my narrative and then we have the strategic objectives report and then a few data summaries that were prepared by staff to go along with those. So in my narrative, which you read, I talk about our current service level in response to COVID-19, mention a few of the highlights from the strategic objectives report, which I know you've also all read, and provide a brief summary of some additional work done in the last month regarding our anti-racism journey, specifically with the advisory team, and some additional training that is scheduled. And then again, a, just a brief summary of what's to come for the Oak Park Harwood Lab. Is there any questions just about my narrative? Okay. We've got, as I said, then the strategic objectives report, which covered a lot of, I think, great work in the last, last weeks in several objectives and engagement and stewardship. I don't know if there were any specific questions anyone had or anything you'd like to say about any of that work?
I will, I'll just note that I know Mickey Kendall, we're not, we're not friends, but we're, we're colleagues and writers and I'm just, I think it's great that you were engaging with her and had feminism. Super, super exciting work she's doing and it's great to see our library being involved with that.
Right. Anyway, we've had the, there's a long report here about the Restorative Justice Conference, the Anti-Racism Book Discussion Group, results of our recent cardholder survey, and you have a data summary about that in your packet, and then information about various ways that we're continuing to plan, prepare to our service levels in response to COVID-19, and then some work in environmental stewardship, including, as Jeremy mentions, including lighting upgrades and composting, as well as in adding additional security for our, for our permanent art collection. Any other, any other questions or comments about this part of the report?
I was delighted to see that you switched the artichoke lights to LEDs and we can now have the option of turning them off. That's, you know, that's, it's been a concern in the community and so it's great to see that taken care of.
For sure. Yeah, thank you.
Agreed. I, I mean, I always enjoyed explaining to people the work we actually do to conserve energy at night and how the system actually works, but I won't miss, won't miss being asked why the, all of the lights are on all night long.
Either way.
That's great. Yes.
Right. And then we have, yeah, the, the usual core use statistics report, and then this month, two additional data summaries that, that Mallory spent a great deal of time with staff putting together, report our most recent community satisfaction survey, and also our staff wellbeing survey. So you saw all the results in those two data summaries in your packet. Were there any, did you have any comments or questions about any of those?
No. I'll just.
Do we have the part-time responses?
I'm sorry, Virginia, you might want to, you might want to type that into chat because it's a little difficult to understand your comment. The, the part-time, and Billy is on the call, he might have something he wants to add, but our part-time response is always unfortunately lower, as much as we follow up and remind and ask to get those responses from all of our part-time staff members. It's always a challenge. And we just, we just continue to work on it. Billy, are you on the call?
Yes, I'm here. I think there's many reasons for it, but, but we noticed that too. We noticed that from, we had the same number of responses from the last one and this one, same split with our part-time and full-time staff. And our guesses are, there's three reasons why we have kind of floating around about why the part-time participation is low. One is of those who are really actively engaged right now and working, it's majority of our full-time staff and about half of our part-time staff. The other, the other part is who's, who has access to a technology and who's regularly checking email as these surveys are go out electronically. And then the other one is, is a little more concerning is that what I've heard is that, you know, part-timers might not be responding because of the concern of like, well, how, like, it doesn't affect them or this survey doesn't affect them. So what we want to do is we're actually, our next follow-up survey to this will be specifically designed for part-time staff, specifically designed to getting some more information from our part-time, part-timers. So I'm looking forward to what, what that response rate will be and what, what types of, and yeah, what we'll learn from that one. A way to combat the tech barrier is if we're, if we're, if the library buildings are open, we'll also offer print, print copies of this that can be handed directly to part-timers. That's one way that we'll come or get around that. Um, yeah, I know there's more to learn from our part-time staff. I also want to just add one piece. There are probably anywhere from like eight to 12 staff members that are included in that 144 that are more like floater type staff members and they fill in. We would still want their feedback, but I'm just thinking that they're not regularly checking their emails, so they might have missed the window to participate. So for all those reasons, but we're, we'll continue to look into it and we'll continue to learn more.
Thanks, Billy.
You're welcome.
If, if I can add, you know, a couple factors that I'm seeing among my students affecting, you know, how much they're responding to email queries and the like, all have to do with. Also, also have to do with socioeconomic conditions in their families. My lower income students, a lot of them are, have picked up additional work. They've had parents who have been laid off and so now they're working extra jobs. They have helped family members with having health issues that they are helping to care for. And so, you know, I think there's, it's unfortunate that, you know, we want the survey response and we want to take care of these people and at the same time, it's a little bit of a trade-off with not putting additional reporting demands on them at a time when they're already spread really, really thin, right? And so, you know, I would sort of say it's, yes, we should follow up and I think it's great designing something to, to survey them directly, but also kind of just being mindful of, you know, of those aspects.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Are there any, oh, sorry, any other comments about any of the data summaries or reports?
I mean, I did, I did wonder, the, there were a couple of responses from staff who felt they did not have the support and resources to respond effectively to patron behavior or, and did not feel safe in the building. Do we have any more specifics on like, is that the sort of thing that we were able to address and improve or is it just beyond our control? What, what are the specifics of that?
Insofar as Billy was able to identify those individuals, I know he wanted to try to follow up in a personal way to, to learn more, but Billy, I'm not sure if you were even able to do that or not.
In this survey, right?
No, this isn't an anonymous survey, intentionally anonymous survey, but they're, just in general, from what I've heard from, from staff, and it's staff that are completing this, this survey, is just the general COVID anxiety or anxiety of working in a COVID during the pandemic, working in the building, having to come in and work with the public. The, the kind of the constant, constant exposure, even though we're doing everything we, we can and everything we should and doing more than that to protect our staff, there's still that, that level of anxiousness, you know, because they're, they're, they have to work in the, with the public and in public and inside a building. The other, the other one that came, came up, the other one that we didn't see a lot of, or I should say, a lot of people agreed with this comment, but, but I think if you scroll up a little bit, Dave, David?
This way?
Yeah, there, the, I have support resources to respond effectively to patron behavior. It's interacting with patrons. I think that was the other one where staff might disagree or strongly disagree. We'd want to learn, learn more about that, but I think that's, that was one of the concerns that we, and we see that we want to learn more about there too. With the, with the buildings being closed right now, we do feel, I mean, obviously this, I've received comments from our staff that they're, they're feeling a lot less anxious now because of the work in, in person every day. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one question about the, the stress levels and the burnout levels, the results. Are those kind of, I'm assuming that they're a little, I would assume that they're a little bit, a little bit higher than what we normally have, but do we have a kind of any standard to compare that to of how far away from the usual they are?
No, they're actually, we don't have any data. We haven't, I haven't asked this question, we haven't asked these questions before. This was our first introduction to this. From our previous survey, we started hearing a little bit more about stress and burnout and so we wanted to ask that question to get a little bit more information. Well, now we need to get, again, more information. I think this is going to turn into a quarterly process, you know, like a, like a seasonal process where we get more and more information and keep, and keep making adjustments with what we learn and what we hear from our staff. And this is not the only way that we hear from our staff, but this is, this is an anonymous way and another way that we would hear from them that allows us to make adjustments to our plans.
Right. So if a part of your question, Matt, was, is there a benchmark from pre-pandemic times? No, the answer really is no.
Okay. I was, I, I thought that might be, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure. So, but I'm glad, I'm glad that we're looking at that now because I think it's going to help us, you know, kind of have a sense of where everybody's at.
Sure.
Yeah, I know, I'd be very curious where this goes because I know that we're asking these, these surveys go out at very specific times and we change a service level or we have a different, I think as, as staff members' jobs are changing a little bit, as they're kind of pivoting to meet the current need, that causes like an uptick in stress. And so what, what, is this going to be a constant or is this something that will change? We'll, we'll see.
I had just one more thing. This is, I think, the next paragraph down where you are talking about multiple ideas for virtual social support and connection. So I think it's, it's just a little below the burnout section there that finally staff were asked and it, I'll just, I'll, I'll note, I've been working on this myself and I don't know, like, I've attended 13 conferences since March over Zoom, so I've seen a lot of it being done badly and some, a lot of what works. And so the use of breakout rooms and giving everyone involved the ability to be co-hosts and move themselves from breakout room to breakout room can make a huge difference in having it feel like this is a social event and not a work thing. And, and I have one specific game recommendation, which is a game called Code Names, which has worked really well for my family and I'm going to be trying it with my organization and, and staff shortly. It's just a word association game and you play on teams. So there's, there's two teams and you can play with anywhere from four people to 20 people. And you have, you need two devices because you have to have a Zoom window open and then like a phone for logging into the code names, codenames.game website, which is free. But I would just, it, we did it with the Cousins recently and it was a blast. It worked really well. It's very smooth and, and hilarious. So there's a, there's just a one thing to try. I think it's interesting figuring out like, what are very low-key, easy things that, and one other aspect of this is a lot of the Zoom fatigue comes from feeling like you have to stare at the screen and, and be visually engaged. And a lot of what people are finding is that if, if it's allowable to be knitting or doing dishes or whatever and kind of wandering around while you're engaging, that, that eases the stress on people considerably. So anyway, all right. Billy, if, if you end up working more on this, I'd be happy to like talk more offline. So.
Thank you, Mary Ann. That's, so we, this question was also asked to help out our newly formed or reformed social committee. We have a social, social committee that stemmed from the wellbeing committee and they, they had an idea, I'm sorry, they had a meeting and they had a brainstorming session last, last week. They're already starting to implement things for our staff. So I'll pass this idea along to them. So thank you.
Excellent. If there's no other questions, we'll be moving on. Now into our financial reports with our monthly disbursements. Are there any questions or comments regarding the disbursements register? This is not the other financial statements, just this register of transactions. Hearing none discussions, there, is there a motion to approve?
Still not.
Are Colleen moving? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. All right. Mary Ann, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Yeah. Matt Frith?
Yes.
Colleen Burns?
Yeah.
Virginia Blimshire?
Yes.
Mary Ann Moenraich? Yes.
All right. The disbursements are approved. Will be next is the narrative report.
Yes, Jeremy is not on the call this evening, but please let me know if there are specific things you want me to call out from his report or questions that you might have about it.
I don't have anything. Colleen, Mary Ann, Virginia, do you have anything?
No, I, this, this is probably, maybe this is just a discussion for sometime after the new year. If, I, I do kind of want to ask the question, I know we've, we've approved the budget for next year, but we do have this, this conversation comes up periodically about grants and applying for grants, and I know David's already doing some and fundraising and I'd love to have like a slightly better sense of, of where things are going with that, maybe in the spring. I mean, this is not, not an urgent question, but, but I do wonder, in, in part because my organization, my, my nonprofit, applied for grants for the first time this year and we've gotten both the grants we applied for and it sort of makes me think like, oh, we've been leaving a lot of money sitting on the table for, you know, two, 20 years. And so it may be worth, worth looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Man, I don't know if you noticed, but Ted Foss has joined in the meeting.
Yes, and I do, I do apologize. I was having a hard time finding the meeting site.
Oh, sorry.
Hundreds of emails, but, so I'm here. Do you, can you, you can hear me, but you can't see me, so.
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Ted.
Any other questions about Jeremy's financial narrative for the month?
Hearing none, well, we will move on to our iGov report.
I'm, sorry, I didn't take notes for this, but Colleen and I were both present, so hopefully Colleen can catch me if I miss things. Essentially, we went around the table and discussed the various org's COVID responses. There was a brief discussion of budgeting. I think we are the only ones who have finalized our budget. The, the rest are still in process and I think everyone we heard back from is planning to do something like 3% in terms of that. The, there was, we're, there was a fair bit of discussion of the community forum for candidates who have gotten their petitions in and we may be looking for people on the library board who are able to serve on that panel. And I don't know the date off the top of my head and I don't know if Colleen has it. I can probably dig it up, but.
Did they, I'm not sure they did.
I feel like I, I put something in my calendar, but, but maybe not. We, we will get back to y'all. They're looking for people who are not going to be running for office in this cycle to serve on the panel, which makes sense. So not Matt or Sarah. So Colleen, you may be drafted into that. Is there anything else I'm forgetting? It was, it was not a very long meeting, pretty efficient.
I would just add that the Village reported that there's an $11 million deficit and they are largely going to deal with that by deferring public works. It was reported to us that D200 has three open seats. There was a discussion of the fact that there is currently no one running for, well, that we know of, that's running for D97.
Yeah, I would say, I think we, there is some concern that we don't know of enough candidates running for D97 and D200 at the moment. So hopefully some will emerge and, and if you know of good candidates, good people who might be persuaded to run, now is a time to have a conversation with them. But I think that's it for the iGov report.
CAG has not met since our last board meeting.
And I don't think, I, I don't think there's another one scheduled this year. Is there a met?
I don't think so. I haven't seen anything.
I haven't received any, any calendar invitations to one, so, okay.
And the ILA Legislative Committee, Advocacy Committee was originally scheduled to meet the day before the election, but they decided to postpone that meeting and they are going to be, will be meeting in December. So with the, the veto sessions in, in Illinois canceled and the election, there, there wasn't at this time a pressing need, I think, to, I don't think, that was out of the communication, but I suspect there was not feeling of a pressing need to have a, the meeting at this So we'll move on then to unfinished business, our vacation policy.
Great. So this is identical to the, the draft of the policy that we presented a few months ago before you adopted your budget for the next fiscal year. And everything that we had intended to accomplish through this revised policy is, is accounted for in that budget. And I know that you had wanted to, the board wanted to delay any further discussion on this until after the budget was adopted. So we are presenting it again this month. You have the edited version here and then the clean final version following that. And again, Billy is on the call to help me answer any questions that you might have about what we're trying to do here. Otherwise, I, we presented it for your, for any decision you want to make.
I did not have anything from anything.
And it looks fine to Ted.
I have no discussion.
Okay. If there is no other discussions or concerns related to revised policy as presented, is there a motion to approve?
Still not.
Virginia made the motion. Ted made the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mary Ann, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Matt Frith?
Yes. Yes.
Ted Foss.
Yes.
Virginia Blimshire.
Yeah.
Colleen Burns.
Yeah.
Mary Ann Moen-Rad, yes.
Thank you.
Policy is approved. We'll move on to the 2021 calendar of regular board meetings and, and days closed.
There we are. So this, something that you do once every year toward the end of the year, approving a calendar of all of your planned regular board meeting dates. All which are here on the fourth Tuesday of each month. And a calendar of all of the no service days or days closed. Primarily because of the holidays that we observe. The one new item in this proposed calendar is Juneteenth, June 19th, 2021. To determine whether you would like to add that date as a holiday that the library would observe by being closed or having no library services on that day. Otherwise, all of the other holidays that are mentioned here as, as closed days are the same as they have been for, for a long, for years.
Is there any discussion? All right, I'm hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the document as the, the schedule as presented?
Ted Foss moves.
Ted moves, Virginia, is that a second from you?
Do you have a second? Do you have a question, Virginia?
I think she was seconding.
Okay. Oh, she says just a second.
Just a seconding.
A second, a second to the motion. Okay.
Yes. So if there's no other discussion, we will call the vote. Mary Ann, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Virginia Blimshire.
Yes.
I see it. Matt Frith.
Yes.
Ted Foss.
Yes.
Colleen Burns.
Yes.
Mary Ann Moen-Rad, yes.
The, the motion is approved. We have our calendar for next year. Next is our decision to conduct or cancel December 20 regular meeting. We've approved our budget. We have approved our vacation policy and all of our other big pieces for 2020. Unless anyone else feels a pressing need to meet in December. I would suggest that as in most past years, we cancel our December meeting.
So, so Matt, should we also cancel the meeting for 2021 December? Or should we just do that later in next year?
What we have typically done is kept it on the calendar in case there is, I mean, there have been occasions where we've needed to meet in December due to a budget issue, like, you know, the budget doesn't get passed, you know, in, in October where we're still working on it due to various factors. Or there's some other item that is coming up that we need to, need to address. I think one year we met in December around hiring an executive director. So I, my preference is to leave it on there in case, and then we can always, it's easy enough to cancel as opposed to adding it if needed. I, I think it's easier to, to pull it back than put it in.
Thank you. And I hope we will have our executive director in December of next year. Right, David?
He's, he's not planning to go.
Is there a motion to cancel our December meeting for 2020?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Ann. Is there a second?
Ted Foss, seconds.
Ted's like, all right, Mary Ann, will you take the roll call?
Yes, Matt Frith.
Yes.
Ted Foss.
Yes.
Virginia Blimshire. Yes, she typed yes. Colleen Burns.
Yes.
Mary Ann Moen-Rad, yes.
The motion carries.
Though I am very sad that I can't invite you all to my Christmas party that I would normally be inviting you all to. So, and with the library closed, I can't even drop off cookies there for everyone. Her grumble bubble.
So Mary Ann, tell me what you're doing for Thanksgiving.
We're doing Trunks giving. We are doing a potluck. Where people have signed up, they're dropping things off on my porch individually portioned for all the people attending. And then picking up their portions and then we'll all get on a Zoom call later in the day with our reheated food to play a board game. So.
Well, that's fun. And I have to tell you all that tomorrow is my 70th birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Birthday Ted.
Oh, that's awesome.
For our birthday buddies Ted, I'm 62, 61 tomorrow.
No.
Oh, so you're, so next year, we are going to have our birthdays, Colleen, on Thanksgiving.
No, I think that was, was that Colleen that was?
No, that was Rita. I normally don't speak.
Okay, Rita, I'm sorry.
I had to since my birthday is tomorrow too.
Yes.
Excellent. So, well, I guess I'm just saying, I'm saying a, a very happy Thanksgiving to everyone before everyone runs away. I just, I feel the need to say these ritualistic things that a very happy Thanksgiving to everyone and very Merry Christmas and whatever holidays you celebrate. And everyone should stay safe. I feel like I just say that all the time now.
Well, I love this, I love this phrase, Trunks giving.
It's good, right?
Thank you. We do, we do, we do have a club, what I think will be a brief closed session on the agenda for, for tonight. For the, for all of you to see, I just, in case you would have trouble finding it again, I, in the chat for you, I've included the link to go to that room for the closed session. Rita is going to remain in this meeting session to keep it active for us. So that when we return, it'll be here and then we can finish the last, the last bit of business for tonight. Does that sound okay, Matt?
It sounds good. So at this time, we will, is there a motion to enter closed session?
So moved.
And there's a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary Ann and Colleen. Mary Ann, would you take a roll call vote to go into closed session?
Matt Frith.
Yes.
Colleen Burns.
Yeah.
Ted Foss.
Yes.
Virginia Blimshire.
She typed yes.
Mary Ann Moen-Rad, yes.
Okay, we are, we will be going into the closed session link provided by.
So Matt, we had only the four people here on, so did you have enough people that you could do all the business before I could get on?
Yes, we, we had a quorum.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ted, you got the link, right?
I hope so.
It's in the chat, so.